All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Live Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley and we are joined by Amanda, Greg, and Kim of the Get Oiling team. Hello, guys. Say hello.
Hello, hello.
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 Welcome on this beautiful Thursday. It is sunny and it's supposed to be 75 degrees in North Dakota, so I am pumped.
That's absolutely incredible. Like, I was just saying before we went live, you guys, it's like I'm in an alternate universe. It's 20 degrees warmer in Fargo than it is in Brooklyn, New York. But good for you, guys. I hope you go outside. All right, welcome, everybody. Glad to see you here. If you're brand new, extra welcome to you. This is a live free resource to anyone that's growing a Young Living business. What we're going to be doing here today, showing you how to take a resource, take an aspect of your business that for most distributors who have been around for a bit, it tends to take up a whole lot of time. And we don't always necessarily see the returns from it that we really want. So we're going to talk about how to create that better situation today and show you a resource that you can use. And we do have a downloadable for this. Check your email if you're on the list. And of course, as a recording, check below this video. We've got an outline, a sort of cheat sheet, if you will, that'll show you exactly the steps to follow. What are the things that you're going to need to include? The strategy you want to use to be able to use this resource. So let me pop over and we'll share some slides and get the show on the road here. All right, so today we're going to talk about how to create a member group for your Young Living members that duplicates. How many of you guys love to see duplication happening in your team? Who wants duplication? Show of hands. Let me see them, hands. We all want this, right? I mean, that's the magical thing about this business is that it can keep going without additional effort from you. But the thing is, is that when we create member resources and we want to educate our members, and guys, let's be real, there's a ton of stuff to educate members on with this company. What we often find is that what we're doing is not actually duplicable, right? So we want to make sure that what we're doing is. So let's go over here and talk about that. So today, we're going to talk about how to educate your members on autopilot while you're actually improving their member experience. We're going to talk about how to make sure your updates are actually seen by all of your members. This is not something that really happens effectively in Facebook groups, right? We're going to talk about how to organize your member area for optimal use and how to duplicate growth with this strategy, even if you're brand new. One of the most important things that you need to understand about duplicability, if you don't know this yet, is that the simpler you keep it, the more of an expert you can be at pointing at information as opposed to being the source of information, the easier your team will grow and the easier it will be for others on your team to share because they're going to believe and know and understand that they don't have to know everything. They just know, they need to know where to point. So we're going to talk about what that looks like. So if you came here today, even if your questions do not have to do with setting up your member area and creating a members vault in Get Oiling, definitely send us your questions that you have. These Live Weekly Work Sessions are intended to be a resource for you to get live hands-on help and we will have time for that at the close of our session today. So add those to the Q and A if you're here live. All right, so first, let's get this out of the way. Your members group is a management aspect of your business. It is not a growth part of your business. It is a management. And we could argue, okay, well, what if I'm promoting so that they order more stuff? Okay, fine. But at the end of the day, your business will grow more as you duplicate. Should you, in the management of your business, promote getting folks onto essential rewards, trying and using new products? Yes, of course. But this is the management column of your business and it's not the thing that moves the needle. Management does not grow your business. And if you are stuck, if you've been at a rank for six months, 12 months, seven years, it's likely because we are in management mode. And when we're in management mode, especially if we have a larger team, it becomes more and more difficult to be able to shift over into growth activity. All right, so let's talk about how to make this easy for you so that you can save yourself time and be more effective and, most importantly, be duplicable. First, if you've got a great upline group already, I want to encourage you to use it. The tools that you should be using to recruit, bring new members into your organization should be something different than a member group. Your member group is not a business building asset, right? People are not joining so that they can get into a group that has a ton of Young Living information in it. They're joining because there's something that you have to say, a perspective that you have. There is something about you, your brand, the relationship that you have with them that's going to make them want to get started. That's something that's wholly separate and so this should be something that's leveraged. If you want to know a little bit more about what I'm talking about here, I highly recommend that you check out Go For Gold, which is a course that we helped create with Martha Krejci. That is at getoiling.com/goforgold. That's where we start talking about the creation of your brand and how you can use that to bring people on board. This is the leverage resource that you would use for ongoing management. So if you are a Go For Gold student, this is something that you're going to want to use. And anyone else can use this as well. Just wanted to make that distinction here first. So if you have a great upline group, use it. Don't reinvent the wheel. Understand that what great means is that there is a clear, step-by-step, duplicable process that your new members can follow. Now, if that doesn't exist, then we have the responsibility to recognize that and create it, but we can keep it simple. Next, importantly, let's get that thing off of Facebook, okay? We created the vaults, the member area in Get Oiling to help you to create a clear, step-by-step, duplicable process to share information with your members, whether it's their onboarding information, their product education, their sharing information so that you do the pointing instead of the repeating, right? So this is a really hard thing to do on Facebook. Facebook is, no matter how many things you put in a units section of a group, no matter how you set it up, it's just difficult to manage and it's difficult to navigate as a new person, especially if there is always a flood of new information, right? So we're going to show you what this looks like and how this can be so much clearer and easier to understand for your new person. So really importantly, you're going to want to get that off of Facebook and into a Get Oiling Vault, which we will show you today. You'll get better organization from this. You'll have better communication with this because it will be targeted. People won't have to go all over the place feeling like they're lost, searching for answers. And then, of course, it's more easily duplicable. All right, now, if you don't know this already, your Get Oiling membership has a member area and vaults. If you have Basic and above, those plans start at $1 for your first month. If you're referred by a friend, you get half off your second. Guys, there is, there's nothing holding you back here. We'll show you exactly how to build this stuff. We've got resources for you. And you can have something beautiful and easy and duplicable set up very quickly. So your member area, and we'll show you what this looks like here in just a bit. Your member area in Get Oiling is kind of like a lobby, right? You walk into a room and there are several different doors that you could choose to walk into. The door that we're walking into today is your private community, a vault that is for your members. All right, so the vaults in Get Oiling are the thing that is most comparable to a Facebook group, okay? So what goes inside of a member vault are things like online classes. And guys, this is not the same as a sway class or a text class. Like, this is like a literal, actual online class. Meaning, you know, you sign up for a course. There's lesson one, lesson two, lesson three, and so on. That's what I'm talking about. And again, we'll show you what that looks like. So in your online classes inside of Get Oiling, what you would want to do with your member vault is to create a Getting Started with Young Living class. And this can be really simple. You can use other people's videos that you like, other people's things that they've written, your upline stuff, third-party stuff. You don't have to be the guru for this, okay? So you would want to include things like product education in here as well. Again, another great opportunity to plug in information that other people made that's beautiful and helpful. You also have discussion rooms, just like you would be chatting with folks on Facebook. You can use discussion rooms to keep a conversation going and keep engagement going. This is also where you can post announcements and where people can interact with one another. The difference here is that they can be organized, right? So you can use discussion rooms for promos, but you can also use them for support, right? So if you wanted to talk about, you know, if you're sort of specialty, if you will, with Young Living and why someone would want to start with you is because you've got a very specific set of information. I mean, this is, I don't want to fall too far down a rabbit hole here, but you could have a discussion around a particular body system and have that be its own dedicated group, right? So people wouldn't be looking for recipes in here. It would just be where people go to talk about a very specific thing. And so it's all very relevant. And so you can actually divide up your discussions that way inside of a vault, which is pretty cool. And of course, you've got that community aspect there as well, where it's not just you talking to them, it's them talking amongst themselves. Pages are another feature of your Get Oiling Vault. This is, just as it sounds, it is simply a page. You can put whatever you want on it, just like a webpage. What I like to do in vaults is to have live call information and recordings of live calls. So on a single page up at the top, you may have information where you have a live meeting once a week where you share information and you get together and just have an oily chat with your members. Maybe you do it Tuesdays at noon. You put that information and the recurring Zoom link on a page like this so that they could go straight there, click from that page and join the call. And if they wanted to catch a recording, you could plug that in beneath it, right? That's one example. Another thing that you can do, guys, I know everybody here has some kind of oily resource that does not come directly from Young Living, whether it be education or tools. You can link off to those things on pages as well. So basically, what we're looking at here in terms of a member vault is a very highly organized, easy-to-access vault of information that empowers your people to help themselves. How many of you think that sounds like a good idea? If you could empower people to help themselves and it was easy for them to do it, would you want that? Look at those hands. All right. So what we want here, guys, is to have step-by-step, reference-ready information without you having to chase people down and ask them if they did the fifth thing that you told them to do when you were on the phone with them, signing them up, right? Something they can go to and look at and reread and understand without you having to repeat yourself a third or fifth or 12th time, right? So if they've got questions, you can point to the vault. If they've got product questions, you can point to the vault. Basic information about Young Living, point to the vault. How do I log in? How do I log in? How do I place an order? Point to the vault. What's the Young Living phone number in my market? Point to the vault. How does ER work? Point to the vault, right? It's kind of hard to do this with Facebook, isn't it? See, what we're doing here is we're creating a system where we are pointing to information. How much more duplicable is it for you to point to information than for you to explain information? Can somebody go behind you who just got started and explain the same thing that you just did to them? That's like playing the telephone game. If we're pointing in a direction, we can all point in that direction and we can do it accurately and easily and that can be repeated accurately and easily, right? Kind of hard to do that with Facebook if it's clear and organized inside of a Get Oiling vault. You can have an excellent member experience that takes the load off your back so you can spend more time growing and leading from the front, all right? So let's talk about some best practices when you are developing your vault. First, make sure that you keep your Getting Started class simple and clear. Don't put 27 steps in this. You really want this to be the top-level, most important things they need to do first so that it feels easy and it feels like they can win on their own. That's what's going to empower people to take action and it's going to make sharing seem like a really super fun, easy idea. The more complicated we make this look, the less likely people are going to be inclined to share because it looks like work, right? So keep it simple, keep it clear. Use videos wherever possible. If we're talking about literally showing someone how to log into the VO and place an order, there are videos for that, you guys. Create one or use one that you already have seen and like and include clearly written instructions as well. Create a separate class for product education. So don't just have one class that does everything. Create an additional class that's inside of the same vault so that they can, if they want to, go back and reference their Get Started Basics of Young Living information. They can go and figure out how to get into the VO in just a couple of clicks as opposed to trying to scroll through something like product education, which is inevitably going to be kind of huge, right? Now, when we set up our vault or set up our class in our vault for product education, I want to encourage you guys to use third-party resources for this. This is going to save you so much time. There are lots of content providers we have. If you go to getoiling.com and scroll down, you'll see who we're currently working with. We're always looking for that list to grow. There are lots of amazing content providers that provide great education in written, in print, in photo and video format, in sway format that you can plug into these classes easily to have a repository of information delivered beautifully and accurately and simply. And all of that can just land right there and live there in your vault and people can go reference it, right? Not with you having to go and become the encyclopedia for them, but for you to actually go and point, right? And for your people to do this as well. You can use those lessons in online classes for individual product lines. You can also include a comment section on those lessons for testimonials, right? So this is actually an interactive thing. If you create a class in your vault and let's just say that it is a class on the thieves line, you could actually say beneath all of that information where there's links off to go and get the cleaner or get the oil or get the cough drops, you can say in the comments below, let me know your favorite way to use thieves. What is this done for you? And now you have an entire repository of testimonials, product testimonials from your members that can easily be found, that can easily then be shared, right? Those testimonials are powerful. And while, yes, people can post testimonials in a Facebook group all day long, how hard is it to find the one that you thought you saw last week, right? So we totally get that headache out of the way if we are doing it this way. Now, if, guys, if you don't have Get Oiling, we are a dollar, like I mentioned before, for your first month at Basic and above. That's where you're going to find this set of features. So if you go to getoiling.com, you can get that now. And I want to cover a couple of quick, frequently asked questions around the vault and around this strategy before I show you a cheat sheet. And then we'll go over and actually show you a member area that will, you know, kind of show you how to get this thing set up. First, does this replace a Facebook group? Yes, it does. But we have to understand that what we're doing here is not trying to replace Facebook with something else one-to-one. Understand that this is going to be different. It's not going to behave exactly the same. There are things about Facebook groups that are not ideal. And that's part of why our member area is built the way that it is. This is a feature that was built with you guys in mind, with the headaches, with the frustrations that you deal with, that leaders in this company deal with in mind to help you create a better experience for yourself, for your business, and even more importantly, for your members. So it's easy for them to get the information that they need and for your organization to duplicate. So this can be better than Facebook groups if you use it right and follow what we shared with you today. Another question, can I go live? Yes, you can go live, but it's not the same as going live on Facebook. Couple of things, going live on Facebook in a group can be great for interaction, right? But it's a very momentary thing. It's not something that holds its power for very long and it doesn't stay easily referenceable long-term. So what I recommend that you do, and this is absolutely something you can do completely inside of the Get Oiling platform, is that you use a recurring Zoom meeting and you keep that link and the recordings of those live calls that you do in the vault. This saves you time and it makes the time you spend more effective and more useful, meaning repeating the benefit for you over time consistently. How do I add new members and how does my team add new members? This is actually pretty simple. You do have a couple of options, but really, basically, you can add them manually, one-on-one or in bulk, directly from your, directly from your contact manager in Get Oiling, which is something that you would use to upload your VO contacts, okay? Or you can make this even simpler and easier for you and use a landing page that would only be shared among your members, among your team so that they can easily get their members into this group. How do I customize the different vault features and settings? Like, how do I actually set this up? We have a class on this and you can follow step-by-step. Hit pause, rewind, follow the instructions at getoiling.com/membertraining. Now, that training there, coupled with the downloadable that you should have in your email right now, if you're attending live and you'll see below this video as a recording. If you put those two things together, you should be able to pull this off beautifully. But we will go through and answer your questions today and show you some of these features and let you see what they actually look like right now. And for those of you who catch this as a recording, if you want to attend this live in the future, we're getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. This is where you can go to sign up and attend live here and get live help. So with that, let me stop my share. And let's get into some questions and some demos, right? Oh, here, let me share this PDF real quick just to show you guys what I'm talking about, what you'll get below. All right. This is pretty well viewable. Can you see it well enough?
Yeah, that looks better now that you made that kind of wider.
Okay, perfect. All right, so what we do here first is we walk you through the setup. These are the different elements of your vault in Get Oiling. Online classes, discussion rooms, and pages. And so we've got suggestions under each of these of what you can include, right? So if you create a new member onboarding class inside of Get Oiling, you can have how to log in, how to contact support, how to reorder essential rewards, why would you want to be on ER? What, how do I find out what my referral link is if I want to start sharing? How do I use my kit and where do I find additional resources such as team groups and things like that? You'll see examples like this. We do have some suggestions here as to how you can structure your product education. I would implore you to keep it simple, like as simple as possible and stay kind of topic-related so that it's pretty easy for folks to find what they're looking for. But you can absolutely embed, so like if you're using Grow Workspace inside of a lesson in Get Oiling, you can have sways and videos and photos and words all in one single lesson. So if you wanted to have all the resources on, let's just say, the Kidsense line, you can have that from Grow Workspace all up in there, one lesson. And so when they go to the class that shows the products, they're looking for Kidsense. It's right there, right? So you can do this from a product line perspective if you wanted to, depending on sort of how like you've structured your brand, how you really love to approach using oils. You may opt to go for body systems as themes. So maybe you're going with, you know, with skin as one and maybe you're going with immune system as one and then using products and organizing them in that way. You decide. This is up to you. You can also include seasonal theme-type information, things for spring, summer, fall, and so on. And again, you can use sways, pictures, info, recipes, tips and tricks. And then, of course, encourage people to put those testimonials in the comments below the product lines or products that are talked about in those individual lessons. In your discussion rooms, you can have a general discussion. This can include, should include, monthly promos, member chat, accountability posts, right? Like, how are you oiling today? You can also have system-specific chat, again, depending on your brand and how you support your members. And then, of course, in your pages, you're going to have your announcements, your sort of community board, if you will, live recording meetings, live meetup link for your Zoom calls that you're going to have with your, with your members. And then, of course, monthly PV promos and those additional product resources. We also talk about how you can use this, just suggesting how you use it, either for you with new members, bringing your, having your new members bring their people here as a duplicable resource and so on. So again, use this along with getoiling.com/membertraining and you guys are going to be able to set up some really great groups. All right, how are we doing on the Q and A over here?
Good, lots of questions. Let's see here. Going with, okay, so there's one actually that came up in chat that I'll just bring here before it scrolls off the screen. Questions from Ursula, it looks like. Do you have a Google translator installed? I have some members who don't speak English. So the member area, you can add content in whatever language that you want to, I believe. And so you can add it, you know, if you've got multiple versions of it. Most browsers now, and browser being like Google Chrome or Firefox or Edge or Safari, do have an auto-translate. I don't know if you've ever seen that. You go to a website, it says, this page looks like it's in Danish or something. Do you want to view it in English and you can toggle back and forth? So most of that happens automatically, but if you have resources in different languages, you absolutely can do that. I mean, you could, for example, set up a vault that's in one language and another vault that's in a different language and then kind of sandbox those or you could put them all in one and maybe there's different sections, however you want to organize it, but you can totally do different languages.
Yeah. Would it, it'd probably be a good idea to just kind of give a quick demo of what a vault and a member area looks like before we start going too far into other types of questions here, just to kind of put a bow on that. One thing I do want to add for you guys, if you want a sort of cheat sheet of like what you want to share with your new member to put in that first sequence. I know a lot of you guys are using our new member campaign, which is fabulous and it's in multiple markets, US, Canada, Australia, Singapore, and global. Those are actually something you should be sending to new members, but you should be reiterating that information in a step-by-step thing that they can return to inside of your member area. So use that as sort of a guide for yourself if you are unclear of what the things are that you want to be showing and sharing and pointing your new members back to as from a duplicable standpoint.
Cool, okay, so this is the Get Oiling Back Office here. To find your member area on the left-hand side, there's a link called Member Area under my site. I won't go into like, you know, the details of how this is set up. This is at getoiling.com/membertraining. But if you just want to view your member area, there's a View Your Member Area button right here. And this one is a demo account that does actually have some content in there. We've got a handful of vaults in here for people. So just to kind of demo some of that structure that I think Ashley has in that PDF. And we've got a lot of questions about, is that PDF coming? And yes, I think we'll be posting that either here or in the replay or both. You know, we'll get that out to you here.
If you're on this list, that's, it should be in your email right now. Otherwise, it'll be posted with the replay.
Super, okay. So is it this one? One of these vaults has all the different types of content in it. So yeah, like this one, so kind of at a high level, this is your member area. This is what somebody would come into and see. You can customize this, personalize it to, brand it to. These are individual vaults, once they're in there. So like this holistic home vault, for example, you go in here and this has like a class, a little resource page. You can kind of tell by the icon here, class, resource page, and a discussion room in there. So the, I'll go with the page first because it's like easiest to see. It's a resource page. I think we've got, looks like there's a sway in here and last May, I guess, but yeah, it's, you can kind of see that you can embed that in there. Pages can be other things like this recipes, for example. So this is literally the page editor. You can basically put what you want to in there. Here's a video. Awesome for posting those replays, to hold those live Zoom meetings. You can post a replay there. And then we've got the class here. And this one is kind of a step-by-step. This one only has one lesson in it, but this one has, just has one lesson where it happens to have a sway and then you can mark it as complete and move on. So, and then there's also this discussion room here where this is kind of like the Facebook feed replacement that this, you know, it's more or less like the, what do they call that? The discussion tab, I guess, in the Facebook group where you can have multiple posts. People can, you can put photos in there, you can comment, you can like, you can reply to people. As an admin, you can schedule posts and you can also actually search the room as well. So that's kind of the overview of how that works. Is that kind of what you were thinking, Ashley, there, just to give the?
Yeah, yeah, just to kind of show you what the stuff looks like in the real world. Like, an idea of what it can look like for you.
Yep.
Yep. Awesome. Let me see. All right, so just off the bat, you guys, for those of you who are here asking questions that are very specific to Go For Gold strategy, those are things that need to live inside of the Go For Gold Student Group where we are talking about specializing information. That's something that needs to be happening in your specialty group. What we're talking about here is creating a purely Young Living-specific member resource group. This is at Young Living with your flavor. This is a Young Living group that anyone on your team could use to learn about Young Living, to learn about Young Living products, to understand how to use their accounts, to understand where they can get resources and support. So if you've got questions around like, you know, fat signal and specialty group and those things that are very specific to Go For Gold and you want to make sure you take those over to the student group. And we can talk about that there. But what we're here to talk about today is that very strictly specific, leveraged, Young Living branded resource. All right. So I did see one question about where we find those new member campaigns that I was just referencing. So you can actually like see what's in them. And that's under settings here that Greg is showing. And then.
Settings, campaigns, and there's this, if you have a lot of campaigns, like if you're, if you have some of our content creators and they've, you've loaded it up with campaigns. You'll, you'll see that eventually, you know, there's a pageinator and eventually you'll see the ones that are made by get oiling. And those are like, you know, so we've got one for Australia. Um, and we go to page two here in this account, Canada, USA and Singapore. And then there's a global one as well. So those are, that's where you would find those. You can click into those. They, uh, you can click on the messages to see what's in there. These are, um, not, you can't edit these directly. However, if you'd like to customize them, come back to the list and click this little icon here, this stack sheets of paper icon. And it'll actually make a copy of it and then you can personalize it however you want to.
Awesome. All right. Suzanne had a question about creating her, um. Her custom page as a homepage, um, and getting her campaign added to that. So this, I'm, I'm not sure because it seems like there's a couple of different elements here. You may want to reach out to us separately from this. But when you're wanting to attach a campaign to a custom page, that's going to be under page settings. All right. Yeah. Holly, your question about that signal lead group, specialty group, we need to take that over to the go for gold student group. Let me see, I finally got my custom homepage to stick, Yvonne said, but if I want to still have the carousel at the top, how do I add that back? Now all the template pages from you are gone. How can I add them under my toxic free living page? Second part of that question, you're going to want to use, um, leg builder links to create links off to our theme pages. So if you want to have your own branded front page of your good oiling website and you still want to leverage our themes for teaching tools or for sharing tools. You just use one of these like builder links.
Yeah. If, if you just wanted it in the menu, there's a way under my site settings and then, uh, site menu here. You can actually add a menu item to your site that is the built-in get oiling website theme. It lets you choose whatever theme that we have available. You can pick one, give it a label. And hit done, and then it'll be in there too. So kind of depends on your homepage, if you have the menu turned on or not. Or if you don't, if you don't want that menu to show up until people have registered. So using the leg builder link is a great way to do that too. And it's actually a nicer looking link. If you're going to be sharing that with people directly, you know, because sometimes people will have their homepage set to be their, basically their, the start of their funnel. But then once they've got a, a warm lead that, you know, they're working with somebody, they will take this leg builder link and give that to them and say like, hey, here's more information about this product line. Whereas this menu item is a little bit different. So there are a couple of different ways of doing that, but either the menu or the leg builder link for that.
Awesome. And then her question about, um, having a carousel at the top of a, of a custom homepage.
The custom pages don't have that right now. You can have like a static image across the top unless you're talking about, um, the built-in theme. Like if you would, you know, if you're to view that one, which I guess I can't, I can't view from right here. Those have that carousel. So those would show up again, once you have the theme page. Um, so you know, if I would save this and view the site, then this pet theme would show up there.
Okay. So, so the custom, so with the custom homepage, there's not going to be a carousel, but, but the custom images that you upload. For the carousel would show up on the themed pages. All right. Jenna says, may I set a landing page to not ask for contact information if a contact already exists? The system does do this if you're using one of our built-in themes with a landing page over it. Otherwise, um, if the contact already exists, I guess it just depends on how you're using the site. So if it is our built-in custom theme, they will be bypassing that, um, that landing page option if they've already opted into it. But the thing about this system is, is that you, um, you're going to have multiple lead magnets for multiple purposes. There's going to be multiple reasons for people to enter their information. And just because someone opts in for one thing, doesn't necessarily mean that they shouldn't also opt in for another. It's not going to duplicate what they receive. Um, if you've got your, you know, your campaigns and funnels. Set up with specific purpose and specific messaging in mind. So, um, so yeah, just if you're brand new, Jenna, and I don't know. It, it does do that for you already. If you're getting into more advanced stuff, there's a good reason to be able to have people opt in, uh, again, if you're offering something.
Yeah. And just to expand on that a little bit, under the customize my site link, if you have a landing page chosen here. Then that's the case when it will not ask you again, it'll just remember you. Any other case out there, if it's a custom page. Or if you're just sharing a, a link to a landing page directly, it will ask them to log in again or to register again. So it's just when it's on the homepage under that customize my site.
Awesome. Hey, uh, Greg, what's the best way to manage contacts and subsequent VO downloads? When there's incorrect information coming from the VO?
Yeah, I guess it kind of depends. So I assume this is, you know, the cases I've heard about are, uh, you know, maybe there's a business name in there instead of their personal name. And they, they want to, if you want to send out a bulk email, you don't want it to say hello there, something LLC, you want it to say, hey Jane. If you want to edit the name or maybe their email address is wrong or their phone number is wrong in the VO. I mean, first of all, I guess if you can get them to update it in the VO, that's probably good because then they'll get the information from me and living that they sent out directly. So that's probably a good thing too. But if you're, uh, you know, if that's something that's not an option and you have updated that information. When you're importing, there is a relatively new option here. This is again, just to walk through the steps, it's under contact settings, import to import a file. Follow the instructions, choose a file. I think I've got a sample one here, folder. But once you have that going, you scroll down here a little bit, there's this new section that says. For existing contacts, only update selected fields. So like if you, if you've customized people's names and email addresses in mobile phones. Maybe you want to uncheck all three of those. And so what this would do is when you run an import, it's going to add the new contacts that don't exist already. You know, let's say there's new members that have joined your team. Awesome. Uh, but for the existing contacts, you don't want them, their name or email or mobile phone to be updated. So that's how, that's what you can do. You can uncheck those boxes, uncheck these boxes, make sure this one's checked and then uncheck whichever ones you don't want to update. When you hit the import and then it's not going to duplicate any, or not duplicate, but it's not going to overwrite the information that you've already put in there.
Perfect. Um, Laura had some clarifying questions. Uh, first, I won't answer these in, in order. Sorry. What did I mean by suggesting to use your uplines group? If you have an upline that has an excellent, active, clearly easy to use members resource group for young living. There is nothing wrong with you plugging in and being a part of the bigger team with your people. The purpose of your member education resource, which is what this is, um, is to educate your members in a leveraged way. And if a resource already exists, then there's no reason why you shouldn't use it. The only reason why you should build something new is if it's not clear and easy to use and duplicable. What we've outlined for you here today is for you to either supplement what already exists or create, create something of your own that fulfills this purpose. Now, um, your question about once this is set up, my downline can use this to send their new members to, yes, they can. You can provide a landing page link. You can also, because their members are your members too. You can add them as well to that resource when you're doing your uploads from the VO. So you can have them add them directly or you can do that. Uh, another thing, and I didn't go over this in detail, you guys. Every part with the exception of the discussion rooms of your member vault is something that you can turn into a resource bundle. So when you create a resource bundle in get oiling, that's down here, what Greg's showing under my account, you can add. All of your vault contents, basically with minus the discussion group. So you can put your pages in there. You can put your, um, your lessons in there and all of the stuff, except for the discussion stuff is going to populate in your members account. So if you have someone in your organization who is building, using get oiling, they can have the same resources that you do. All right. Um, a few questions. What is a sway? Sway is a Microsoft presentation file. One of our partners, Grow Workspace, one of our content providers, Grow Workspace, they make beautiful ones that are often used to. Educate members and share promotions and things like that. Uh, you see, you can find that from them. And for those of you who are asking where you find our partners, go to our homepage, get oiling.com and scroll down. We are always looking to add more great content providers, uh, the ones that we are currently working with, who have stuff that can download or upload. Or that just magically appear inside of your good oiling account, um, are the folks who you see right here. And of course, this will continue to be updated. All right. What else? Let's see. I have an email and text campaign for all newbies. Would it be more effective to move it in the vault? Terry, do both. People will receive messages, uh, emails, texts, and they'll be like, oh, that's cool, but I can't act on that right now. And they'll delete it, they'll forget it, it will drift off into history and then you have to communicate with them again if they didn't do something with it. You should double up that stuff. Don't ever worry about showing up more frequently with the same information. Because the fact is, is that it falls through the gaps with everyone. It's just a fact of life, especially when we're working with people on the internet. You can't count on email as being the sole way to reach people or text for that matter. So you always want to have a static resource you can point back to, drip it out to them. They may take action on it, but most people don't when you send it. So make it a thing that they can return to. Let's see. Um, oh, a couple of, because I'll just go ahead and answer this one. I was going to type here. Um, let's see. All right. For, for those of you who have questions around like, okay, I'm at basic, I have one vault. How do I do everything with one vault? You actually, there, there is a way for you to add additional vaults to your plan without going up a plan. So just shoot us a message, support at good oiling.com and we can help you with that. Okay. Let's see, for product education, would you keep the topics more broad or hone in on topics that are more brand specific? For product education, Carrie, just product education. This is just young living. This is why I, I say so often to you guys in the student group, uh, and of course, reiterating here today. That, um, this is something that should not turn you into the professor. You do not need to be an oily professor. As a matter of fact, that is the easiest way to not be duplicable in this business. Is to feel like you need to put your oily professor hat on because that's super intimidating. If you want people to come behind you and see that this is easy and fun, um, or can be easy and fun. Nobody's going to believe that if you're showing up like the professor. So I would not go and put your spin on this. There are other ways that you can do that and show up and what you're talking about with your brand that we cover and go for gold. That's where you want to show up in your specialty areas. For this, this is literally like get the stuff from grow workspace, use Lindsay Elmore's stuff. If you've got her stuff, like use Martin Companion. Use our other partners, like just use other people's stuff for this. Make your life easy with this. All right. What else? All of this stuff is on our website. Yes. If you have a get oiling site at basic or above, all of this is there. You can start for a dollar. All right. How do you monitor comments that people make? Can I make, can I approve comments before they go up?
Yeah, there's not a, a comment approval at the moment for that.
But you do get notifications.
Yes.
And you can choose how frequently you get them. Um, your members can choose how frequently they get stuff, that kind of thing.
Yeah, you could set, for example, if you're the adminning this thing, you could set it to ASAP to get a notification like right after somebody posts. So that's clicking this little gear icon here in any of the vault pages. There are actually separate notification settings for each vault. So you know, if there's one that you trust more than the other, you could change different settings. There's also, you could change it for the whole member area just by coming over here and changing it for the member area.
Perfect. Uh, speaking of, of member area and layout here, um, is there a way to reorder the order of the vaults in the member area from Jill?
Not at the moment, at least, um, in a straightforward ma- manner. Um, that's definitely on our wishlist here. To be able to order those differently. You know, and part of it is that not everyone sees all of the vaults. And maybe that's, you've got it set up differently. So somebody's, um, you know, if you've got five vaults, some people might only be in one order. Doesn't matter. If they're in three, maybe they're not in the same three as another person. So the kind of the order can vary, I guess, a little bit. If you do want to try, they are alphabetized right now based on the vault name. So one of the little, I guess hacks around that at the moment is when you're editing your member area and you're editing your vault name. You can just add a little space to the front and then that will bump it to the top of the list. So if there's something you want to move to the front, put a space in front, it won't save it. Um, on the bottom and it's not going to make any difference, um, in terms of like what it looks like here, but it will definitely move it to the top. So that's a little workaround for right now.
Perfect. So let's see, um, just to reiterate the, the document that we, that I was showing earlier, you guys. If you receive our emails and you're here live today, it's in your inbox. We will send it again and we will have it posted below this video as, uh, when we post the replay. Let's see, Deb, she's asking, um, just so that I'm clear, I'm inviting everyone in my downline to my members area, even those who I haven't personally enrolled. So there is some nuance there depending on your organization, your relationship with leaders in your organization and so on. A few weeks ago, uh, we, um, we outlined, and I guess we should probably go grab that link, uh, just for reference. We outlined how to go about sharing and inviting, um, your members, everyone in your organization. To receive information and resources for you, from you, so that, um, they have an opportunity to say yes. And you aren't just going with it, right? And not just sending that to them. Let me, actually let me pull that up real quick, guys. Our YouTube channel is youtube.com forward slash get oiling. And the, if I could type that in, right? This is important. Everybody should watch this. Um, it's important for you to know the workflow for this. And it is called member education in less than one hour per month. We did that two weeks ago. So basically what you're doing there is you're using, you're using permission-based marketing. So you're sending a single, uh, campaign out to them that just has a, hey, this is me, these are my resources. If you'd like to get access to those resources, here's what you do. And then a reminder email that goes out a couple of days later. Uh, again, just kind of making sure here that you are not, um. Sending information on an ongoing basis without getting permission first. You don't want to spam people. So definitely follow the instructions there to handle the, how do I contact my not personally enrolled correctly? See, is there an example link that we can have to see how your demo looks? I need to see it slowly. So Martha, if you're talking about the member area, you can go to get oiling.com forward slash member training. We actually show you how this vault was set up and, um, and walk you through the steps of setting up your own. And you can watch that and pause that as much as you want. Let's see, how do you see who has been in the vault? Good question, Tabitha. This is actually in your contact manager. This is a powerful thing, you guys. I know when you have, um, like a Facebook group, until it's up to a certain size, you can see who has seen posts. But beyond a certain point, you have no idea who's seeing what and you feel like you're posting to crickets, right? You can actually see not only who has logged into the vault, but if you've got videos and your lessons in your vault, you can literally see the percentage of videos they've watched. Really, really cool stuff. So you can see, see, there you go. See the class content there. So that's going to be on your individual members' contact files. All right. Anna says, I've been working on redoing my site. I have a page set up for classes that anyone can go to. Would it be better to put those in a vault? Uh, I would say yes, because this provides a more organized streamlined way for people to find resources and they aren't all over the place. There's a list of things they can find the one that they want and they can take advantage of that. Can we use a live, uh, a video that was a live and a closed group on Facebook in our vaults? If you download a video, um, and then you upload it to, um, I recommend Vimeo. If you are, you know, really kind of shoestring right now in your business and you can't afford a paid video service. You could go for unlisted on YouTube as well. Just the idea here being if you want to keep it private in your member area, it's best to use private settings on video. We prefer Vimeo for that, uh, but if you must, you could definitely do an unlisted YouTube video for that, but you would have to download it off of Facebook. All right. Can you do this? Um, yeah, Susan, you can do the same thing, just different content for your specialty group for go for gold. So if I'm understanding this right, Jane's account has four vaults. How many classes, discussion rooms, pages, et cetera, can be added to each vault?
Yeah. Great question. So the vaults and classes, uh, the number that you get is based on your plan. So like, um, basic, I believe has one vault and one class. Premium has five, I think pro has 10. And anyway, there are, and there are ways, like Ashley said, there are ways of getting, uh, more vaults without having to jump up a plan. If you're just like, I just need one more or whatever, then contact us at support at good oiling.com. We can help you out with, with that. We can help you out with, with that. So yeah, as far as the content is concerned, like, let me go into the holistic home here, since that has all the types of content. Classes, that is, the way classes work, you create them. Let me go to the member area, and I'll show you how that works. So kind of at the top level of the member area, you create your class, and then you add it to more than, or one or more vaults, once you've created it. So while you, you know, like with Basic, you can have one class, you could put that into, well, I guess if you add it on a vault, let's say, you could put that into two vaults, if you wanted. You know, if you would upgrade and get to the extra size, or like in, and Premium has five, that's probably a better example. You could have one class that exists in five. So a good use case for that would be, you have a, like an EO 101 type class, and you have that in the, you know, like a prospects vault, as well as a members vault. It's basically, it's literally the same class, same education, but it's just in different places for different people. And they're all kind of private, so comments from one, your prospects vault wouldn't show in a members vault, for example. Now, as far as the other material pages, that's based on your plan. With Basic, I believe, you're limited to 10 pages site-wide, including public-facing pages. So that applies to your member area as well. But with Premium and higher, you have unlimited pages, and then there's also unlimited discussion rooms. So yeah, it gives you some flexibility there.
Awesome. All right, Michelle says, on contact file, it says, member vault area access, yes or no? So I, yes, on their contact file, you can see whether or not they have access to a vault, and you can control access from there and see if they've accessed anything. She wants to know, how do I set up the vaults? Oh, go ahead, please.
Yeah, it's, so this is actually, this member area access is more of a ban feature than it is access. So by default, everyone is yes. But if there's somebody who's like, they need to get kicked out, this is what you can do, you can come in here and, and ban them. Now, their, their access to your member area is, if you don't have that set to no, if it's set to yes, that's controlled by the vaults. If they're not in any vaults, they can't really get access to your member area. So it's kind of a two-tier thing that, that, you know, when you're editing a contact, that switch I was showing you, or that little radio button I was showing you before, is kind of the master, like, they're, you know, they can't log in, they can't do anything, and their account is dead. This, you can also control by adding or, you know, clicking here and removing. For example, you can control what parts of your member area they get access to.
Perfect. I should, a couple more questions. How do I set up the vaults? So one can be for public access, one for members, one for ER members, one for business builders, for members when they have to qualify to have entry to the vault, right? So the, just making sure that the right people get into the right vault, and then maybe also having a public one. Just so you know, like, you do have reference for this. What Greg is showing right here, also, getoiling.com/membertraining shows you how to set up these options too.
Yeah, there's a help article that actually explains the different ways that this works. So if you click, or if you click that little green question mark, type in vault, there's adding contacts to a vault. And there's a nice article showing you the different ways that you can get people into a vault, from manually adding themselves, setting up a landing page, texting keywords, or member area signup. And there's actually even another, another way here, there's like a workflow for a search for vault, showing free vaults that need approval to enter. That's like a, kind of a fifth way, or sort of a sub, subset of the landing page approach. So there are some resources there that walk you through that as well.
Perfect. So a question here, do I go to getoiling.com/membertraining to learn about everything about Good Oiling? No, no, it says specifically, goodoiling.com/membertraining is, is teaching you how to use our member area features to grow your business, and how to set that up, like really step by step. You don't have to be a member to go in there and see how that works. We do have several Getting Started with Get Oiling type videos on our YouTube channel. If you want to look at that from just sort of a getting started perspective. And then also, our system kind of walks you through the process of what you need to do to get set up and get started working with us. If you just get started today for a dollar, all of that's going to be there for you. Terry has a campaign question. I copied a campaign and then wanted to adjust it to different PSKs. When I edited it, both campaigns were edited. How do I edit and keep them different?
Usually, when you copy them, I guess it, maybe it depends on how they were, you know, if this was recent, this might be something to contact our support about. When you're creating a campaign, there actually are, like, I'll just jump in here. There is a button or a link over here that's kind of dimmer than this one. This lets you add an existing message to this campaign. In other words, it lets you reuse a message. And so if for some reason your campaign has a message that's shared by another campaign, then yes, editing one would edit the other. But usually, when you copy it, it does make a copy of the messages. So they are distinct for each campaign. So yeah, send us an email if you can't sort that out. The other option would be just cop, well, click this Write a New Message button, and then like copy and paste it over into that new tab, and then remove your other message with the little X down here. And that would take care of it too.
Perfect. Megan says, I'm wanting to add a recipe section where I post healthy food recipes. Am I going to need to put that all on one page? Ideally, I'd love to have a dropdown for all of the recipes, but that would eat up all of my pages, right? So actually, Megan, if these are healthy food recipes, the best place for you to put those is on your blog. And you can link from, like, you can link your blog posts as sort of a directory that corresponds with information that you want to share inside of your member areas. But if you're putting healthy food recipes out there, that is a fabulous way for you to actually be getting leads and bringing people in closer. So it would take up, if you wanted to like make a page per recipe, that would take up your allocation at Basic of your, of your custom pages pretty quickly. So you can do different types of recipes on, say, like lesson pages inside of classes. But, but yeah, just to kind of really hammer that point home, I would use recipes to get leads. I would do that on the front-facing blog of your site. All right, when I create a post in a conversation room in my vault, an email is sent as a notification. Do all my members see this, or to just those who have created their member account?
It's just those who have created their member account. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to get access to it. So yeah, they have to have created, set up their member area password, and they have to belong to that vault in order for them to get the email notification.
Awesome. Debbie asks, how do you get your custom homepage to stick on the website? I created it in Go for Gold, but don't know how to get it to show up. We do walk through this, but I think this is a pretty simple thing to show how to do, right? To apply a custom?
Yep. Yeah, definitely. It's under My Site Settings, and then your Site Menu. You just have to make sure that the page is on here somewhere. In this case, I don't have a page. So I will add a website page. I'll pick one. I'll call it my, well, probably in this case, call it home, because that's what we're trying to do. And just make sure you've checked this box to make this the main page for your site, and then save it, and then that becomes the main page of your site. Pretty simple.
Perfect. What is the carousel? I've got a couple of questions for that. So this is actually a series of images that scroll through. There it is, right there, at the top of our Get Oiling Themes. And these come with your website. These are already done, ready for you to go right out of the box in multiple markets when you get started with us. All right, can you show, go ahead, sorry?
Yeah, and for this one, for the built-in themes under Customize My Site, there is a way to change or upload your own photos there. So click Customize My Site, and then click this little Customize button next to the website theme. And then you can choose whatever photos, like if you'd want this gorgeous-looking mountain scene, whatever, you could do that. And that would, if I would save it, that would replace this, and that would become your carousel photo.
Perfect. Terry says, can you show how to do separate themes, how to do a theme for pets, a theme for healthy living? Can we have several? I want to target pet owners and keep targeting others as well. So this is absolutely where you want to use those, those Leg Builder links. Or if you wanted to, like Greg showed earlier in Q and A today, you could have a custom menu on your site that could drop down, and you can have one that's for pets, for babies, for, you know, whatever. We have, actually, a lot of our members do that.
Hopefully, she won't mind us showing this, but this lady has a custom-built website that she's, you know, built with us. Under her Learn Menu, she's got pretty much all the themes here. So, you know, going through all of them, like if I click on Healthy Homes, it'll switch the website to that one. You know, where, where we'll see all that, and then we can pop over here to, I don't know, the, maybe the, the plant-based makeup link that she's got. And then you can see it will change down here, kind of changes that to that, that sort of theme. So yeah, that's, that's what that looks like when you got that in there.
So impressed with her website. She did a really good job. All right, Deb, if I add links to third-party information, are the members able, able to copy and share the link? Are they able to copy any of the information off the page? Is there any way to keep that from happening? So in terms of shareability, an actual page or anything from inside of a vault, for instance, that's protected, is not going to be visible to someone outside of the vault. However, if there is a link, there's really nothing that's technically stopping anyone from copying a link to share. This is why we really, especially where video is concerned, encourage you to use something like Vimeo, because it does really protect stuff. If you're putting a link to something in Facebook, same thing, they can grab the link and go somewhere else. Whether they get screenshot, they could download the photo, like, there's, there's not really a way to keep that from happening, period, across the board. But if you put something on a page, for instance, and the information's on a page, unless you just really want to go through the trouble of screenshotting or copy and pasting, the page is going to stay hidden if it's a page inside of a vault, just as an example. Okay, I already have a Zoom account I'd like to keep. Is this possible with your Zoom feature? Does that make sense? You would just set up your meetings and whatever you want to do with your Zoom separately, and then just bring your links over here. That's all. You wouldn't go live through, like, you wouldn't launch a Zoom meeting through the account that you have outside of us from here. You would have to, you know, launch it from a separate tab or a separate window. All right, is there a way to have a small landing page that just pops up when someone comes to your site, where they can give their name and email, is the way they want more info to your site is obvious, along with that small pop-up landing page? So if you're using a custom page for a homepage, the, the landing? There it is. So this, this is an example of that. So if you're using a custom page for a homepage, you can do that. All right, is Zoom basic version only, or can I have longer Zoom classes?
You can have the longer Zoom classes. It doesn't cut off after 40 minutes. You do have to start the meeting from within the Get Oiling Back Office, but, but yeah, it's, it's longer than 40.
How does this look with one vault? You would just see the one vault link in a member area, Kristy? So they would land in the member area and just see that one place that they can go. All right, how do you put the Sway link in the member area to open up automatically instead of clicking the link? We actually show you how to do this in getoiling.com/membertraining. You would be, either, you can embed the sway, and we actually, if you look up sway, if you search sway on our YouTube channel, we've got multiple videos that show you how to make funnels with sways, how to embed them on pages and things like that. Super doable, without having to click the link and go somewhere else, it can actually be embedded, so they can view it right there. Let's see. How do I know when I'm ready to share my lead magnet link? Ballerina, you would actually be sharing the front page of your funnel, if you have a lead magnet. You would be sharing the front page of the funnel, which is your landing page. That's where you're going to grab the information of the lead that makes them a lead, right? So they're, they're attracted like a magnet to the lead magnet, which is the thing you're giving away. In order for them to receive it, they've got to put their name and information in. And you know when you're ready to share that, when you have that complete first. But then, when you know that what you made as your lead magnet is relevant to a person's needs. So when you're creating content, blogs, videos, things like that, you share the link to your funnel so that you can get leads from people who find that information in the future, find it helpful, and want to learn more from you. Just as an example, you can put that anywhere in your social profiles too. All right, where site-wise would you offer lessons intended for prospects? I guess this kind of depends on what your intentions are with, in terms of lessons for prospects. Campaigns are a great way to do this as a part of a funnel, where if you want to kind of educate people toward taking next steps, then you could definitely offer something to that effect. Where do I find what my member area password is?
So if you're talking about you yourself logging in, if it is asking you to log in again, and usually, your web address will be, you know, in this case, she doesn't have a custom domain, so it's getonline.com/jnail/members. If it's asking you to log in there, you can log in with your Get Oiling Back Office credentials. If it's somebody, if you've created an account for yourself, or, you know, you're testing it out, and you want to see what a member looks like, and you created a contact, then you would have to go into your contact manager. You can't actually see the password of the person, just for security purposes. But if you scroll down to the vaults area, once you're on the contact detail page, there's this also relatively new feature. Click on this little Password Settings link. You can even, if you click Get Link, what it's going to do is give you a link that you can now share with somebody to reset your password for that account. So if they can't, if their password reset isn't working, the email spam overlords are stealing the spam reset email, or the password reset email, you can just send this to them somewhere. So yeah, so that's a great way to do that.
Perfect. Let's see, what exactly does it mean about Good Oiling Partnering? So Martha, we have a number of content providers that have partnered with us to be able to deliver their content through our platform, which means that if you are a member of theirs, you can receive their content on our platform. They have resource-sharing bundles that you can get from them, that when you click them and you're logged into your Good Oiling account, those campaigns, saved replies, follow-up plans, pages, funnels, things like that, will copy into your account. So all of the folks that we have as of now, and of course, in the future, if somebody sees this as a thing far down the road, you'll see an active list of the people that we are partnered with in that way on our website. All right, is there a cost to adding more vaults without upgrading my plan? Yes, just get in contact with us. Is there a way to do it with one vault? I, I wouldn't include all purposes of everything in one vault. I don't think that that's a very effective way to root information. You certainly can. I'm not saying you cannot. I would not advise it strategically, is basically what I'm saying. But you can add on a vault for a really reasonable monthly price. Just get in contact with us. What is Lindsay Elmore's stuff that we can add? I can't speak to that personally. I know that she has a thing called The Club. I know she does a lot of really good product education, and she's got stuff that she offers that I believe you are actually able to like use and share. So I would look into that. She's got some cool stuff. So what are we seeing on this page? Okay, so what we're seeing on this page are vaults. Yes, what we see right now is a member area, and what you're seeing there are vaults. When you log in the vault, would the pages be in there with information? Yes. When they open the page, could they then comment, which would be a discussion room? Do I have this correct? So a page is different from a discussion room. So there's a recipes page here. And Megan, this is an option for you, by the way, ask questions about recipes page. And then you've got this one that looks, you see little chat symbols. This is the discussion. All right, how do we get added to receive the email? I've registered numerous times, starting last year, haven't received the emails with download. Have to check for replay to see if there's a download. Michelle, send an email to us, support@goodoiling.com. We'll look into that with you and make sure that you are getting our emails. It could be that maybe you unsubscribed to something at some point, and it just kind of blanked it, unsubscribed you from everything, even the stuff that you want to be seeing. So we can get together on that and make sure you're getting the information you want. Are vaults limited in size?
Only by whatever your plan allows. So if you're on Basic, you'd, you'd only be able to have 10 pages, like system-wide, including public-facing pages and pages in your vault. Once you're in Premium and higher, there's unlimited pages, so there's really no limits then on pages or discussion rooms. And there's a limit on class too. So I guess it's sort of, you know, unlimited. Classes can have as many lessons as you want to in them as well. So I've seen some that somebody did over 100 lessons one time in a class, so it's a big class, but it's possible.
Those are really big class. All right, so how would you separate the blog posts in different languages? Always thinking about categories and doing it manually. Is there a better way? So Greg, do you have anyone that's, that you've been corresponding with that's doing this in different languages?
Not with different languages, but I can show you generally how this is done. So this is a lady here who's got, you can use these blog categories to organize them, and you can have a tag for one language, a tag for, a tag for another language. And you can actually put multiples on an individual post. So like here, if I click into here, you can see that it's, it's on all these categories. So you could say, okay, this is English, and this is topic XYZ, and that'll all show up over here. So if they want to, then, you know, once they're viewing your blog, you can just click on this. No, I want to see everything gluten-free, or in this case, maybe it's English or Danish, or whatever language that you're in. Then it'll show all those posts in that category. And these are, you know, you can use these links, like you can see here under this diffusing. You know, you could have a blog header, and then whatever other languages you support, and it'll just pull up that category based on the link, you know, that you put in there.
Awesome. Let's see, when we teach a class in Zoom on the website, how do you connect it to the vault? So Kathy, you would, you would download the, or rather, when you're recording, you record it to your computer. You record your Zoom, it will record to a file on your device. You will then take that file, and you'll upload it to where you want it hosted. So if you're using Vimeo, which is what we recommend, you upload it to Vimeo, you then use that link to either put it into a lesson in your vault, or embedded on a page in your vault. And then, of course, you know, you can do that multiple times. And then, of course, you know, you can do that multiple times and in different, different ways for different purposes. So if this is a class that's meant to be part of onboarding or part of product, product education, you can insert it into your lessons in the categories where it fits. And then if it's, say, you know, a monthly call and you just keep a, you keep all of your monthly call links on a page inside of your vault, then you would just embed that there, maybe with the description. Can we zoom in on these icons here so we can clear up for Diana? She wanted to understand what these icons mean, the differences between them. All right, so the, the little graduation cap is your lessons, your classes. This little page icon, these are pages. This is where you can embed stuff. This is where you can post links. This is where you can put your third-party resources. And then finally, with the little chat bubbles, this is your discussion. These are the three types of things that can live in here. You can have multiples of these things, multiples of all these things. You can name them differently, but the icons are going to either be lesson, page, or discussion. All right, can I hire someone to do all of what you're talking about on my personal page? Do you have people on your team that I can work with personally? There are some options that are available. Definitely reach out to us. Get Oiling, support@getoiling.com, and we could talk about what those options are. All right, so would, what would, so would classes be vaults or would classes be inside of all? Yeah, so everything, everything in your member area is going to be in a vault, right? So the, the member area is a waiting room. The, the click on the vault to open the door to go in the different rooms, okay? So your classes are going to be in a vault. Okay, I'm brand new to Go For Gold. I get a handle on all this when I go for, yes. Okay, so Marcia, what you're going to want to do if you're going through Go For Gold is that when you start getting to the, getting to the modules that teach you about groups' strategies, you would use this for reference on how you would create your member group. But everything that you need to learn and get things done in Go For Gold is in Go For Gold. Awesome. All right, so member area needs to be set to yes, and then you actually have to add the specific vault, too.
Yep, I think I understand that one. So yeah, for someone to be in the vault, someone to get access to your member area. Now, by default, when you're editing a contact or when you add a contact, it's always going to say, the internet's getting really slow here all of a sudden, but this member area access, there it is, has a yes and a no. It's by default, it's always yes. So, but they, so they have to be set to yes, and then they have to be in a vault in order for them to have access, I think is what she's asking.
Okay, perfect. All right, when you're using Grow, like Grow Workspace, how do you get the newsletters, Sway, et cetera, and add it to your vault? So the newsletters from Grow are going to arrive in your account via a resource sharing link because they're a partner with us in that way. With Sways and things like that, you would actually take the Sway link and using the instructions that we shared before, again, search for Sway on our, on our YouTube channel. And, and I think also, again, and what's up?
Oh, I said, I did actually put a Sway training link to one of them that we did in the chat, too, if you want to grab that link.
Perfect, perfect. So you want to use that to embed your Sways, whether you want to put them in lessons or on pages in your vault. And if you want to take like a newsletter, like newsletter information that you've gotten from a content provider, it may be in saved replies, it may be in campaigns. Basically, all you're going to want to do is just copy what's there and then bring it over and put it into your vault, right? Take the image from there, take the text from there, or just copy it and paste it in a lesson, for instance. Format it to your liking from there. And, and definitely do both, you guys. Like if, if you have, you know, member resources, don't just count on having sent it to them via text or email to believe that that actually was enough to make sure that they really received and processed all of the information. Back it up so that you're more effective. All right, where do you create the page that you want to have in your vault? Yvonne is asking.
It's actually part of the vault setup process that getoiling.com/membertraining walks you through that. But when you're inside the member area and in the vault section, there is an add button. Again, my internet is being a little slow apparently here. But there's a, under vaults, there's a way you can add content. There you go. So let me go into, go into one of these vaults. And, yeah. Slow-moving right now. There's a, yeah, so there's an add content button here, and click that, and then it'll come up and with the, it'll show you a way to add a page, and I would click through here when this thing loads. So apparently, being slow.
I'm getting it intermittently here, too. I mean, everybody's home around the world. We're all just like, yeah, we're throttling our, our internet providers.
Yeah, there we go. So add content, and then you can create a page or copy a page. If you pick copy, then it'll come up with all the other pages that you have, and then you can choose to copy that in there, or you can just add a new one from scratch with create page.
Perfect. Laura had a question. She's asking if there's a way to integrate Get Oiling with an outside CRM to get contacts center updated automatically. We are at the core of our system as CRM. So what you can do is you can export your CRM contacts from other systems that you have used and upload them here. You can also upload your contacts from the VO here. And, and that way you can have everything connected altogether. The whole, whole kind of point of the build-out of all the feature sets here is to keep you from having to do integrations and to keep this really simple and easy for you and straightforward. So, so you can import here by a CSV, and we've got multiple articles on the site that show you how to do that. All right.
And if you have a custom website, oh, sorry. If you have a custom website that you've built that you're not using Get Oiling for, there is a way to integrate Lead Capture there into Get Oiling. You can just contact us, and we can give you some instructions.
Perfect. Suzanne, I changed the details in my story, changed it in some pages, but not others. Refresh the site, but it didn't update. Basically, where you're using a Get Oiling theme, where you're using like the My Story and you're using the Landing Pages option under Contacts, that's where your story that you've put into My Story and Photo is going to show up. If you've added your story to custom pages, for instance, like if you created a custom homepage and added your story to it, that's not automatically going to update. So do make sure that you've got that information copied over there. But if you've updated it under My Story and Photo, everywhere that you have a Get Oiling theme present and everywhere that you have a landing page from the Landing Pages option in the Contacts menu, that will show up and, and also add an update for you when you do that. Carol would like to know where to turn off the daily action items emails.
Yeah, so there's two parts of that. If you're talking about the coach, click on your coach icon here and then go under Settings, and then you can click Off and then Save, and I won't do that here on this account. The other way, that will still send you a daily activity email, like if you have to-do items, or if there's been some activity on your website. If you want to shut that off for some reason, click under Contact Settings, and then under General Settings, there is a checkbox for Send Me A Daily Email Of Activity And To-Dos. If you uncheck that box, that shuts both the coach off, or at least your notifications of the coach, and the, you know, activity that might come. Totally understand if you want to do that, there's an option for that as well.
Awesome. Guys, we have a, a custom menu help article, right? If you click the little, the little icon down here. Got a couple of questions popping up for that. How did they do that? How do I make it horizontal versus vertical? Guys, a lot of the questions that you have, you'd be really surprised if you come over here and you click this little thing, it's going to show up for you. So make that be the first thing that you do. Happy to answer your questions here. Don't want to make you guys stay here forever, but like a lot of questions are easily answered by clicking this little question mark. There's tons of help articles here that'll help you get those answers super quick. All right, on the Settings page, I can't see the Add Campaign section. Can't scroll down slowly to get it. Can only see the top of the Settings page or at the bottom. Okay, Suzanne, I'm not really sure where you're at on this. If you're on a custom page, this is going to be under the Landing Page Settings when you hit Settings, but I'm not really clear that that's where you're at. You may want to just shoot us an email so that we can kind of get through that with you a little more quickly. All right, when I send an email to a group, is there a way to add all the people to get notifications by text to increase viewing? So the thing is, Terry, yeah, you could, you could just send a text. But the thing is, really importantly, and again, referencing the how to educate your members in an hour a week video on our YouTube channel, there's an important way that you should be going about that. You need to get permission. You, obviously, you want to increase viewership, but you want to make sure that when you are sending something to people, you're also taking into account whether or not they've said yes to getting information from you. So you do this by getting consent from your personal enrolled, the people that you have a personal relationship with. They say yes, you tag them, and then when it comes time to send something out, you send it to the tagged people. And then we actually show you in that video how to perform a weekly process that just takes you a couple of minutes to send out a campaign that invites people to opt themselves in so that all you're doing when you need to send something out is searching, filtering your contacts for that tag that they've opted into and that you've applied to people who said yes, and then only sending stuff to those people. That's permission-based marketing. It's going to keep you from landing in the spam folder. It's going to keep your deliverability high, and it's going to keep those relationships intact with builders in your downline. All right, with my Lead Magnet, I note that on text, the pictures are out of order. How do I change the pictures to be on one side of the page without having to redo the Lead Magnet? So Cheryl, I think you're, you're talking about a custom page, and it sounds like what you have is alternating images. So basically, what you're going to want to do is create a new section with the image on a different side, and then just swap the image out for what you want and swap the text out for what you had in that previous section. So you are kind of redoing sections of your Lead Magnet page to get that done. There's not really a way for you to just like drag it around, but it is pretty simple. Create a new section that looks like you want with the layout you want. Swap out the elements, copy and paste, and you should be good. All right, got that one answered, and that one, too. Terry, we have, if you go to Leg Builder, if you look up Leg Builder from this little question mark guy here, we show you exactly how there's, how do you set up Leg Builder links? How do you use them? All of that is right there. All right, are members able to copy the Sway link to a class and share that outside of the vault? If it's embedded in your vault, no. If it is a hyperlink, yes. So definitely follow the instructions we've given you. GetOiling.com/membertraining shows you how this was done. Definitely do it this way. It's not, I mean, there is that sharing button there, but it's the same share button that would be there no matter what, right? Can people do the wrong thing? Yeah, they can do the wrong thing. We have to trust that they will be good people. All right, can a blog be just recipes? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Like that's, I feel like that's what most blogs are. It's totally not scientific, but a lot of, a lot of blogs are recipe blogs. All right, the categories on the menu, that's going to be covered in the custom menu. Like that little teal button at the bottom of your screen when you're logged in. Looking forward to diving into Get Oiling after this workshop. Awesome. Welcome, Marcia. All right, when I say, how does this look with one vault? I mean, offering all of the things you shared with multiple vaults, doing it with one. Kristy, you would just have a whole lot of stuff inside of one vault. I don't recommend that you do that. You can actually add an additional vault to your plan without going up another plan. So what that would look like is that you would have double or triple the number of elements we're talking about here inside of a vault, or you would have, like Greg mentioned, maybe a, a class that has 100 lessons in it. You know, what we've outlined to you here is what we recommend that would be most impactful and most effective. If you want or need to change that, we can't really advise differently from what we've put here, aside from what I've shared with you. So reach out. I mean, our, like the addition of a vault is really reasonable. Just reach out, and then we can talk about how we can get another vault in there for you if you need more than one. All right, is there a way to preview content partners? GetOiling.com, scroll down, they're all there. You can click off to their websites. Several of them actually have a page on our site where we talk a little bit more about them, where we have videos where we've interviewed them. You can look them up on our YouTube channel as well, so you can check them out. They're all really reasonably priced. See, can you give an example of what various vaults would be? GetOiling.com/membertraining goes into this in detail. This is, you know, a Leads Vault, Members Vault, Biz Builders Vault. If you're a coach, you can have a coaching program vault. That's all in getoiling.com/membertraining. Let's see, so are those bundles by the providers editable? As I'm not in the US market and would need to edit, as we don't have all the products and promos are different. Yes, yes, those are editable. When they come into your account, all you have to do is hit Copy. And actually, I think a lot of them, you can just edit straight from what you receive, right?
Yeah, they just show up like, a lot of them do campaigns. So they just show up here. You can edit them. You don't even have to copy them unless you want to save your original.
All right, Diana says, I just got a text asking about enzymes. This would be perfect if I had a page all about enzymes to point her to or send her to. Or if you had a lesson in, in a class that was about enzymes and that had everything, you know, maybe it had a Grow Workspace Sway. Maybe it had a listing of seven or eight different Young Living products that fit under the enzymes category, and then some testimonials at the bottom. So I would go to the Enzymes Lesson in your class inside of your member group for that. Great idea, Diana. All right. Why use a page versus a class or lesson? It's really an organization thing. I would not want to put a link to a weekly meeting, a weekly live Zoom in lessons because they're going to have to scroll through, pick through, click three different things to find it. A page is going to be a readily available resource. A page is also really great for you to set expectations, to kind of give an overview, the quick, easy-to-grab, go-to information. So what I personally typically use these for is that Setting Expectations page, right? So here's what you do, and here's what's next. Start Here is usually what it looks like when I do this. And another page that I really like to use in vaults is Live Classes, Live Coaching. So at the very top, I'll have a link to the recurring Zoom along with, these are the, you know, the day of the week and time of day that it happens. And then beneath it, after those live calls, I upload the video to that page. They can scroll through the page and see the different topics for the different weeks, and press play and watch that stuff from right there. So those are things that don't need to be clouded up and jumbled up with product education, right? So coaching and, and meeting and social stuff is not going to be as directly relevant as somebody who needs to go learn about enzymes right now, right? All right, how do we add a password or charge to get into the vault? That's going to be in the Settings for your vault setup. That is something that we do cover in getoiling.com/membertraining. You, when you set your individual vaults up, you can choose to have them closed, meaning people have to be invited, right? Or they have to enter via a landing page to be able to access the vault, and so that makes the password protected. Or you can have people be charged to enter the vault, right? You do have the option, if you want to, and I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole with this, you guys, but if you have a paid vault, so let's just say, for instance, that you offer a class on something that is yours. Maybe you're a health coach or something like that, and it's $49, and you charge for that, but you want to give it to your team, you can bypass that by adding your contacts manually. And there's a little box that you can check when you're adding your contacts to a vault to have them bypass payment. All right, what did you say is a waiting room? So it's, is that technically actually a waiting room? It's just kind of my metaphor here, Jean. But your member area has nowhere else, nothing you can do, nowhere you can go except for into the vaults. So that's kind of my, that's what I mean by the, by the waiting area. It's like where you would land, like you walk into a doctor's office, for instance. You're in the waiting room, and there's only a couple of options you can do. You can leave, or you could go through this door, right? That's what your, your member area, and then the vaults are go through the door. If you go to microsoft.com/sway, I think that that's where you can go to learn about Sway. I honestly, I don't know. I don't use Sway, so.
Yeah, I Googled Microsoft Sway and that link popped up, so there's something there.
Yep. All right, could I have opportunity on my site menu? Yes. Then have a page with basic income info like the IDS that's actually already on the opportunity page that you can include on your site. It's already made for you. And then have something to kind of entice them to join and get business information. So that would be what you're talking about, adding additional information to this page, which you already have this. If you have Get Oiling, you have this already, and you can make this a part of your custom menu. It's a part of your menu already when you start with us. It's already coded up with your Young Living member number and all that kind of good stuff. If you want information beyond this, which I wouldn't recommend, honestly, because it's not duplicable, right? You're, you're adding something that looks more complicated to the person that needs to repeat the steps that you did to get started, right? So unless you're going to create something that is intended to be used by the person next in line to get started with you, I would not complicate that further. Let's see, I would rather have... Let's see, I would rather have an opportunity video in a business vault, but do want something in the menu indicating there is an income opportunity. I mean, honestly, Diana, what I would do is I would maybe have a page that talks a little bit about opportunity, that does not offer a video, that only basically says, you know, this is why I'm so excited about this. I'm not saying what it is yet. If you want to learn more about how to get these kinds of benefits, lifestyle, blah, 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 contact me. And then take it from there. Take it off the website. Guys, there's, there are some things that we just can't automate. Sharing is not a thing we can automate. Signing people up is not a thing we can automate, not in a duplicable way. So your goal just really needs to be information, hook, get in contact one on one. If you keep that mindset, everything's going to be a lot easier. All right. Would you please explain your statement back it up? When you said, okay, yeah, yeah. So basically Jody, what I mean by back it up is to repeat. So if you're going to send an email or text campaign and you want that to be something that people are educated with, then back that up by including that same education in a referenceable resource inside of your vault, right? So if you are going to have 12 different text campaigns that teach all of these different product lines, people are going to have to fall down certain rabbit holes to be able to access those. And it's really cool to be able to get people off of Instagram on a text campaigns. I think that's super cool, but your members need to see that stuff too. And they don't necessarily want to get onto a text campaign for it, or maybe they just don't know, right? They don't know that you have this info and you're only giving it out this one way. You're backing it up by providing this additional information, the same information in this case, inside of your lessons in your member vault. All right. I prefer doing a video or a recording first and having the words put into a blog. You're so smart. I heard of a way to have that happen. How does one do that? I would go to fiverr.com or to Upwork and hire someone on the cheap to transcribe your video. That's the best way to do it. But really, I mean, we're talking about 500 words and, and your videos don't have to be very long. They don't need to necessarily say the exact same thing. As a matter of fact, like I, I like the idea of speaking to top three points in a video. And then maybe I mention those points in the text or maybe in the text of the blog. I'm like, hey, I made this video today to talk about X, Y, and Z. Hit play now to learn more about it. If you want to learn more about my resources, click here and that's my lead magnet link, right? So it doesn't have to be complicated. You don't have to hire somebody to transcribe your video. There is, I'm not going to get into that. There's, there are some SEO strategies with video SEO that would include doing stuff like that, backlinking and all kinds of crazy stuff that we're not going to teach here or talk about here because it's crazy complicated. But really all you've got to do is just show up authentically. You know, get to the point. If, you know, the people that you follow appreciate you getting to the point or expound if you've got a totally green audience or you want to attract one. It's really up to you. But yeah, if you want a transcription, I just go to fiverr.com. All right. Great questions, you guys. Super excited to have you all here today. Thanks for everybody for sticking around. Definitely keep an eye out on your email and head over to our YouTube channel to check this recording if you have not gotten the download yet. But, but do make sure, guys, for everything first, login to get oiling, look in the bottom right corner of your screen, click that question mark, type in what you're looking for. Most of the answers are already there and you're going to help us help you. Because when you can't find what you're looking for, we're going to know. And that tells us that we need to make some more of those things, right? So please use that. And, and then of course, use that, use that search feature on our YouTube channel as well. We've got lots of those walkthroughs. And for today's information, getoiling.com/membertraining plus that nifty little outline I made for you guys today should get you everything that you need to set up an amazing member area that saves you time. All right. Thank you, everybody for being here and I look forward to seeing you next week.
Later. Thank you.